Okay, good afternoon again. Good afternoon again, everyone. This is Lyndage, and you're board chair, and I'd like to welcome you all to the public board meeting of the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners. For those of you who are joining, if you're not speaking, I ask that you please mute your phone. At this point, I'm going to do a roll call for the board to identify who is on the call. And a reminder again to board members to please identify yourself before speaking for the record. Is Commissioner Bondima here?
Yes, yes. Can you hear me?
Commissioner Brooks? Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Brooks? Commissioner Frank? Commissioner James Hassan?
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed? Commissioner Richardson? Okay, Commissioner?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was on mute. I said yes.
Okay, okay, so, okay. Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And I am here. So Commissioner Brooks and Commissioner Reed, I did not, didn't hear from. So we have eight who are present, okay. Is there a motion to reopen the meeting?
Ms. Frank is present.
Commissioner Frank, is there a second?
Bondima.
Thank you. This is a vote for all those who are in favor to reopen the meeting. Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Frank?
Yes.
Commissioner James Hassan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And I'm in favor. Are there any opposed? No abstain, so the motion carries eight and two absent.
Well, I'll just sit over here by the charger for a while.
Okay, I'm gonna remind us that we need to mute. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the prior open session minutes?
Move approval, Frank?
Thank you. And a second?
Second, Richardson.
Thank you. Those in favor, Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Commissioner James Hassan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And I'm in favor. Any opposed? No abstentions? Any other commissioners joined us? Okay. This motion passes eight in favor and two absent. And now I need a motion to approve the closed session summaries.
So moved, Richardson.
Thank you. Second?
Frank.
Bondima.
Those in favor now, Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
James Hassan?
McFadden? Yes, sorry, it was.
No problem. McFadden?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Okay, Roberts?
Yes.
And I'm in favor. Commissioner Lynn does not vote on this one. No one opposed or abstaining? Has anyone else joined us? Okay, this passes seven in favor and two absent. Okay, just, just, just a couple of things that I would like to do. First of all, I just want to remind and thank all of the folks who are joining us here for our virtual meeting. And to just let you know that as a board, we do encourage public comment at our meetings. We understand that, you know, and, and please hope that you understand that logistics sometimes for a virtual meeting has been a challenge, especially when we have to have some people mute while others are speaking. And so for this reason, what we've been doing so far has been to have the board executive read the comments that have been submitted. Tonight, we're going to try to expand that where we will again have those comments that were submitted by email read, but we also open the opportunity for folks to submit video and audio recordings, which we will have available at the time for public comment. And so when we move into that time, I will ask the board executive to, to share those. Our technical staff is still working to find the best solution while we are still in this time of, of virtual meetings. But again, we do want to hear your direct comments. Also want to let everyone know that the board is working with our staff in, in terms of considering and, and brainstorming what a recovery plan will be for our students. At some of the committee meetings that happened this past week, we began that process. And if you were, if you joined, I think you probably heard some of, some of what was happening. We invite you to be a part of those meetings in the future as we continue that. We also want to let the public know that the Maryland State Department of Education has a document called Maryland Together, where you can learn more about the guidance that we are using that comes from the state as we are considering a recovery plan for our schools. And then finally, I'd like to acknowledge a gift of four hundred play kits, which are worth approximately three thousand five hundred dollars. These are to support at-home play, engineering, and fitness activities at Franklin Square Elementary School and Marie G. Faring Elementary Middle School. And these came from Kaboom. And so again, thank you for that. We have some items that are under the personnel and quasi judicial, and these are going to be voted on separately. And so is there a motion to approve item three point zero one, which is the Personnel Employment and Payroll, the PEP?
So moved, Richardson.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, James.
Thank you. Okay, and this is those who are in favor. Commissioner Bondima? Commissioner Bondima, are you in favor of, of passing the PEP?
Your mic is on, Dr. Bondima. Your mic is not on.
Okay, I'll, I'll double back.
You're still muted. I see the mute.
Okay.
Thing on her.
Commissioner Frank?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner James Hassan?
Yes.
Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
I'm in favor. Commissioner Bondima, could you, can you hear us now?
We can't hear you yet, Dr. Bondima.
Hey, this is Reed. Can someone unmute her on the tech team?
Can you hear Reed?
Oh, Commissioner Reed, you're here. Okay, are you in favor of the PEP?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
It might be a lag because right now she's showing as unmuted.
Commissioner Bondima, if you can hear us, can you give us a thumbs up or whatever to let us know how you'd like to vote?
Hey, Christian, should she type that in the chat?
She, I saw the visual, yes, so that's fine. Yes, the thumbs up.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so the motion passes. I have eight in favor, one absent. Now, item three point zero two, appeals and hearings case twenty dash twenty-one G. Is there a motion? This is to accept the hearing, to, to, to accept the hearing officer's recommendation.
So moved, Richardson.
Second, Reed.
Thank you. Okay. Those in favor, Commissioner Bondima? You're not yet?
Actually, you're gonna come up.
Okay. Commissioner Brooks with us yet?
No, he's not gonna be joining tonight.
Alrighty. Commissioner Frank?
Yes.
Commissioner James Hassan?
Yes.
Commissioner McFadden?
Madam Chair, I'm gonna abstain from this vote.
All right, no problem, thank you. Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Okay, I'm in favor. Is anyone opposed? One abstention, Commissioner McFadden? And this motion passes. We have seven in favor, one abstention, and one absent. Now we're on item three point zero three, which is appeals and hearings case number twenty dash one hundred A. Is there a motion to accept the hearing officer's recommendation?
So moved, Richardson.
Okay, is there a second?
A second, a seconded, McFadden.
We need a second to vote.
McFadden, you did.
Thank you. Okay, we're voting now. Commissioner Bondima? Did anyone see?
Yes.
Thumbs up.
Hit the thumbs up.
Okay, Commissioner Frank?
Abstain.
Okay. Commissioner James Hassan?
Abstain.
Okay. Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm in favor. We have, and, and anyone opposed? Okay. The motion, this one passes. We have six in favor, no one, no opposition, and two abstain. Okay, and now, folks, I'm going to go through the consent agenda. Board colleagues, let me know if you would like an item to be removed. And we ask that you please state what your question or issue is for the staff so that they can be ready. I am, we are pulling item six point zero one because our student commissioner can vote on that one, which is the renaming request. Six point zero two, operator renewal. Six point zero three, twenty twenty comprehensive.
I have, I actually have a question on six point zero one as well.
Yes.
On adhering to policy, I just lost it, FCA, just the, the policy states that we need to meet with the community. And I just want to make sure that that happens.
Okay.
In, in our data, it shows that they would, that we had a city schools team, but doesn't say anything about the parent community and the school advisory team.
Okay, so they have to be ready to respond to that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
I want to pull six point zero two for a vote.
Okay. Six point zero three, the Comprehensive Educational Facilities Master Plan. Fourteen point zero one, software maintenance and support. Fifteen point zero one, Nichols Contracting Incorporated. Fifteen point zero two, Denver Illic Incorporated, what is this, J.F. Fisher, JCM Control Systems, Johnson Controls. Fifteen point zero three, grass mowing services. Fifteen point zero four, WEX Incorporated. Fifteen point zero five, Census Corporation. Fifteen point zero six, promotional items and personal protective equipment.
I'd like to pull that, Madam Chair.
What, what question?
My question is for the promotional materials portion of that. How does that intersect with the promotional materials contract that we approved for a significant amount of money, probably, I don't know, four or five meetings ago?
Okay. Fifteen point zero seven, St. Vincent de Paul, Baltimore. Fifteen point zero eight, Denver Illic Incorporated. Fifteen point zero nine, Education Logistics Incorporated, Edulog. Twenty point zero one, Community Schools. Twenty point zero two, Pinnacle Communications Resource Company. Right? So I have pulled sixteen point zero one, sixteen point zero two, and fifteen point zero six at this point. After public comment, I will, will come back. And if board members wish to make any other changes, please let me know.
Madam Chair.
Yes, yes.
There are some items in twenty for the Chief Communication and Community Engagement Officer for procurement.
I, I read twenty point zero one, Community.
Oh, never mind. I see it. Never mind, never mind. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to make sure you got all of section six. Do, do you have point zero one, point zero two, and point zero three?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
The two that were pulled were one and two.
Right, and then someone.
No one pulled three.
Well, I had some, I thought someone pulled zero three.
Do you, do you want zero three pulled?
I do not. I thought I heard someone, but.
I.
Okay. All right, I was mistaken.
See people shaking heads, but I didn't hear it. Okay. Alrighty, okay. You can, you still have time. We're gonna move now into public comment. Speakers from recognized groups will have the opportunity to speak for five minutes. And following that, the board exec will then let us identify the, up to ten folks who have either emailed or sent video or audio messages that we will be receiving for public comment. Our speaker this evening representing the Baltimore Teachers Union is Ms. Christina Duncan Evans.
Good evening. Can I be heard? Can people hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Christina Duncan Evans, and I am the Teacher Chapter Chair of the Baltimore Teachers Union. I was relieved to hear that the school board will be allowing people to submit videos for public comment rather than having to submit their comments in writing to be read aloud by the board staff. However, I am concerned that this solution exacerbates the board's tendency to not provide a response when members of the public or institutional partners request one. To put it plainly, you can't converse with pre-recorded content, and the exchange between board members and commenters is one of the few opportunities for the board to publicly consider perspectives outside of what they hear from central office staff, which is at best incomplete. Additionally, while many people's technological capabilities have grown in the last ten weeks, the board is still putting an undue technological burden on members of the public. I'd ask the board to reconsider just giving people a phone number to call in at a designated time instead of requiring people to record video or audio to submit in advance. The board's problematic implementation of public comment, ten weeks into physical distancing, shows that responsiveness to and relationship with the public you are appointed to serve is not a priority. At the same time, when we honor the process and approach the board in good faith for a redress of grievances, we get little to no response. On April twenty first, BTU President Diamond T. Brown asked a series of questions about black teacher recruitment and retention with an expectation that the board would seek and provide answers to those questions. Similarly, on May twelfth, BTU Elementary School Vice President Cory Gaber asked questions about family and community voice in the school budgeting process and laid out a timeline for a response. Just today, Cory Gaber received a meeting request in response to his public comment two weeks ago, and we'd like to thank the board for ensuring that level of follow-up. However, we are still waiting for any response or communication regarding BTU President Brown's comments over a month ago. The board is charged with overseeing the district and the CEO, and a lack of response to public concerns is an abdication of its oversight authority that weakens the relationships necessary to address our shared challenges. Further weakening those relationships is the board's refusal to honor the work done by teachers, clinicians, and support personnel during the week of March sixteenth. The BTU has collected examples and documentation of work done that week at over one hundred schools, work that was often done at the behest of school principals. Unfairly forcing staff to work a week beyond our contractual obligation during the most challenging year any of us have experienced is a shockingly insensitive action from people who continually themselves request grace and patience. It's insulting to assume that in the time of initial uncertainty, we wouldn't do everything we could to prepare for a crisis and set up structures to maintain learning and connection for the young people we serve. It's insulting to think that because central office didn't specifically give its staff instructions, that teachers, PSRP's, and clinicians didn't continue planning, preparing, and contacting students and families. We lack clear instruction from central office continually and are experts at navigating without their guidance. It's insulting that on the Wednesday of the week in question, the CEO sent an email specifically praising the work that was being done, noting in her words, "The continual efforts being made by BCPSS employees." And it is exploitative to try to take these four days that we worked, claim that they don't count as contractual days, and try to use them to supplement next year's instruction. We already know that there won't be enough resources, time, or money next year to fully meet our students' needs, but the answer is not to try to extract more from the frontline workers responding to student and family trauma. The answer is to demand more resources from the city, the state, and the state because Baltimore City's children deserve a fully funded and fully resourced education. When people use the phrase "institutional racism," they mean three or four specific institutions, and the public schools are one of them. I can't know what's in any person's heart, but I strongly believe that board members chose these positions with the knowledge that Baltimore City Public Schools were a manifestation of institutional racism and a sincere individual desire to do right by our students. But I also want to raise up that the school board's current actions uphold rather than upend the inequity and dysfunction you presumably came here to fix. Like you, I exist in several problematic institutions, and I am working to undo the racism inherent to them. So my comments today invite you to be a collaborator and accomplice in the spirit of breaking down systems of oppression. If we are going to come out of this crisis stronger and more resilient, it will only be by working together. Together, we might be able to create a school system that weathers this storm, but currently, the BTU has received no invitation to participate in any planning committees focused on reopening schools or unfall instruction. As the exclusive representative for over two-thirds of city school staff, we have to have a seat at the table from the beginning to build a plan that works not just in a flow chart, but in the real world. Valuing the input of the community and employees that make up the Baltimore City Public Schools is an essential part of a united path forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan Evans. And just, we'll let you know that the vice chair and I do have a meeting scheduled with the BTU leadership, I believe, tomorrow. And so we look forward to following up on some of the, of the things that you discussed this evening. I'm gonna turn it over to the board executive in terms of any other public comments that have been submitted.
Sure. Good afternoon. I've received, we received seven requests for public comment. Four were written and three were audio or videos. I'll start with the written comments and then proceed to the audio and visual, video comments. So our first written comment was from Ms. Zerkah Hahnus. Dear board members, as we are catapulted into the pandemic COVID nineteen, we are all trying to live, work, and survive during the new normal. This is affecting all of us, including families, students, educators, leaders, first responders, essential workers, namely, our United States of America and the world. During this time of COVID nineteen, Baltimore City Public Schools has persevered and has remained strong by learning how to communicate with families, network with each other, and service our students. It is a challenging time for all of us, but we continue to work hard to deliver in quality served best of our ability. As far as related service providers, during the initial weeks of school closure, related service providers were networking with each other, taking webinars, communicating with each other via telecommunications, and reaching out to families in hopes of connecting with them. There was then and continues to be a learning curve for us in acquiring skills to help provide services to students and work with families. It has been a work in progress, and we should be recognized for not only our efforts, but for the work that has been done with students and families despite obstacles, including learning new ways of providing service such as technology-based services and virtual communication from the beginning of school closures. The question of when schools will close for students and staff for this two thousand nineteen, twenty school year has arose. With the pending waiver, students may end on June fifteenth, but staff, we were notified, will continue until June twenty third. The question of why staff will be expected to work six extra days beyond the date students end is of concern. I can understand working a day or so, or even till the end of the week after students end, but six days? Many of us have made plans and have families and lives outside of work, and this should be taken in consideration as I feel that we are looked upon as a workforce and our personal lives and families not considered. On May eleventh, communications of central office stated, "Dear colleagues, as you're all aware, all city schools buildings will remain closed for the rest of the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year. The fourth quarter began on Monday, April sixth, and the last day of school is Monday, June twenty second. We will continue to provide you with updates and additional information as soon as it becomes available. Thank you." How did June twenty third become the last day for staff? The start of the school, the start of school for the twenty twenty one school year during COVID nineteen is concerning. For the last three years, students have started back to school after Labor Day, and staff started the week before students prepare. If BCPSS decides to have us work additional days in June to, as was stated in the Communication of Human Capital on May twelfth, two thousand twenty, explore creative ways to leverage or repurpose this additional staff time to support our students and staff in the upcoming school year, then why we need to come back so early and August do the same thing? Since August typically a very hot month and a favorite vacation month for families, perhaps working a few extra days in June, not six workdays for staff will be beneficial so that everyone enjoys and refreshes. The temperatures in August will more closely resemble an incubator than the temperatures in June. By August, the temperatures in Baltimore City school buildings rise dramatically. Most school buildings have no air conditioning or air conditioning that's insufficient. Officers have air conditioning, but most classrooms do not, but they do, they often do not work sufficiently. Fans are not an option. They do not cool, just blow around hot air. Working in such circumstances, environments, is unhealthy and unsafe, even under non-pandemic circumstances. If school buildings are unsafe for students, particularly since the newly found syndrome that is infecting children is thought to be linked with COVID nineteen, they're also unsafe for staff, especially for those who are more at risk with underlying medical conditions and relative age. Additionally, summers, August is still summer. Why disrupt summer and family plans, family, summer and family plans? Families need time together, and that includes taking staff members and their families into consideration. I feel we do not have a voice in the plan. The schools should count that we should. For example, Baltimore County schools gave their staff a vote regarding the start date for the twenty twenty one school year. Communications have consistently been sent out from Human Capital offering work and wellness resources for staff and efforts of balancing work and home and taking care of yourself, offering virtual yoga, managing work, home space, and self-care. How is this possible with the given situation? Many of us do not have office space at home, do not have technology. Many of us do not have office space at home, do not have technology to support our work, have small children who need attention during working hours, and the list continues. Working from home has been a challenge, such as working very long hours, not being able to leave work at a normal time and return to our families through the meetings, emails, et cetera. It is impossible to have quality time at home with our family or for ourselves currently. Summer is our, summer is our time to take care of ourselves and our families. And county surrounding students begin school after Labor Day. Thankfully, the Baltimore City also may have family in surrounding counties. If school begins for students in Baltimore City before Labor Day, students cannot partake in activities with families in surrounding counties and end of summer activities due to after-school activities, homework, et cetera. The quality of instruction, not the length of the school year, that is important. Let children be children, let families be families, let staff have time with their families and for ourselves. Let us all enjoy the summer, and then everyone is ready to get back. Thank you. Regards, Zerkah Hanes, speech pathol, speech language pathologist. Okay, give me one moment. Okay, the next, the next written comment is from Amir Francois on Clay Hill Public Charter School. My name is Amir Francois, and I live in the Patterson Park neighborhood with my wife, Kim, a PR and marketing professional, and our nearly two-year-old son, Lucas. As a former Baltimore City Public School Central Office employee and an education researcher with ten years of experience, I've been highly impressed with the Patterson Park Charter School, Public Charter School team and their educational approach. Their dedication to being a school truly connected to the neighborhood and local students through a whole-child community focus that leverages the diversity of the area inspired my wife and I to get involved. We are both eager to offer our services and talents as founders of the new Clay Hill Public Charter School to share this model with even more families in Baltimore. In our year working with this dedicated and diverse group of volunteers and staff, there's no question that Clay Hill is already a labor of love, centrally focused on the best interest of the students and families it will serve in the future. Despite the passion, expertise, work ethic, and progress our team has made, none of us could have anticipated the impact that the recent pandemic would have on the process of developing the new school. As a member of the hiring committee, I've seen firsthand how uncertainty caused by the pandemic has made building the best team more difficult as we've been forced to modify our rigorous process of in-person interviews, live sample lessons in classrooms, and school stakeholder interviews. We strive to start our school with the best possible team, and this will be harder to ensure in our current climate. For marketing, we plan on a high-quality engagement and frequent touchpoints with local families to promote CHPCS. In addition to creating a website, utilizing social media, and sharing news at the school with local media, we, more importantly, wanted to afford families the opportunity to meet future faculty and staff, share more about CHPCS at local community events, and distribute CHPCS information with local businesses and through door-to-door outreach in southeast Baltimore. Unfortunately, the recent pandemic has limited our opportunities to engage in these meaningful ways that can build the foundation for the community to learn who CHPCS is. In keeping with our mission to provide a quality and meaningful learning space for the community, we know that waiting until next year will serve Baltimore students and families best. Our next written comment is from Ms. Catherine Van Neta, and she's a mathematics teacher. And there's some, I'll share with the board, there's some appendices that are images, but I'll just read the written portion. This document describes the tasks I completed from March fourteenth to twenty-ninth, including email communication, formative assessment creation, feedback on student work, and online instructional materials development. The appendices provide documentation of these tasks. Not only did I work the first week after the closure, March sixteenth to twentieth, hereafter referred to as Week One, I also worked full-time throughout our spring break, March twenty-third to March twenty-seventh, hereafter referred to as Week Two. It was so important to spend the time thinking, experimenting, and planning so the rollout of distance learning would be organized, accessible, and clearly communicated. Number one, I sent sixty-nine emails during Week One and fifty emails during Week Two. These emails responded to student questions about assignments, gave students feedback on work, and communicated with colleagues about resources. Number two, I created online formative assessments. These assessments included a Google Form practice unit test and a geo, ge algebra lab, a dynamic software which permits students to visualize geometry concepts. I learned how to add Google Form features to enhance learning and promote academic integrity. I watched videos on how to add feedback to student responses and how to vary the format and questions that students receive. Further, I investigated several Chrome extensions to assist with the presentation and submission of electronic math work. The first Google Form practice test took me four hours to make. Several students requested another practice test, so another version was posted during Week Two. Number three, I reviewed student work as it was submitted. I graded a quiz that was completed prior to closure, and student performance was not as I expected, so I created learning materials for additional student study, remastery. Number four, I experimented with various online whiteboards. I even pilot tested using the whiteboard with two willing students during Week Two before making a final decision. I learned how to create video presentations. I felt strongly that videos would be the most equitable method to prevent content, since most students could access them at any time. I had no prior experience with this mode of instruction. Students gave me feedback on a pilot video during Week Two. I respectfully request that the board consider the work described here during March fourteenth to twenty-ninth as they decide the last day for educators. Educators off the school system complete a task like these to best support our students. Next, and the written comment is from Joel Pally. His message goes as such, "I'm a teacher in Baltimore City. I think it is unfair to force teachers to work through the twenty-third and claim no work was done between the transition from physical and digital school. Educators like myself, let, educators like myself, lessons spent much of this transition grading, planning, and contacting students and families. It's shameful that we are told we weren't doing our jobs during this while this board has yet to even set up live public comment for these hearings. Live input is something every K-12 teacher in this city has figured out how to do for their virtual classes months ago. We've done all this, been asked of us, and more. True appreciation doesn't come from just words, it's backed up with action. Yet the only action we see around these issues now is exploiting a perceived technicality to squeeze additional labor out of us." And that was Joel Pally. All right, this audio comment is from Yesenia Meja. Going to, give me one moment. Can everybody, hold on one second, that's not it. Can everybody hear that?
Since the stay-at-home order was issued, teachers and staff have provided support, communication, and virtual class time to my son. His first assignment was issued to him on March sixteen by the teachers. My son's math teacher, for example, assigned due now textbook, workbook, and homework assignments every day of the week of March sixteen and March twenty-third. These assignments consisted of coordinate plans, understanding the purpose of fractions, multiplying and division of fractions. His teacher provided helpful step-by-step videos on how to complete her assignments. She was always available for extra assistance via email. Furthermore, my son's math class came together during both weeks to work collaboratively with the teacher on certain assignments. Ms. O'Connor also gave feedback on his assignments. Despite the challenge of distance learning, his teacher worked hard to find ways to make assignments fun. Since March sixteenth, we have received updates via video message calls and emails from my son's school in English. These daily communications were also translated into Spanish for Hamstehill Latino families with the help of HHA bilingual staff and teachers. Hamstehill Academy informs us of any updates and motivates our family to keep staying safe and active in education. During the week of March sixteen and spring break, HHA staff created instructors on how to download Google Classroom for Spanish-speaking parents, constantly share information about food banks, and then give individualized support and guidance for family in English and Spanish. Teachers and staff were always available to give my son the support he needed. Principal Horbeck and his team of teachers were also hard at work, raising money for families impacted by the COVID-19 outbreak. He and his staff understand that many of the parents have lost their jobs and no longer have adequate income. HHA staff also worked tirelessly during this time to find out which students didn't have computers and provide them with one. The school faculty and teachers have been staying in good communication with all the families and have been really supportive during this extremely difficult moment. My son's teachers worked hard, and that should be recognized. That's why I strongly believe that the last day for staff should be one day after the last day for students. Sincerely, Yesenia Mikiya, HHA parent. Have a great day."
Okay. Give me one moment. Next is from this, a video from Mr. Edwin Perez.
Good afternoon. My name is Edwin Perez. I'm a teacher at Baltimore City College High School. I'm also a member of the BTU. I want to talk about my experiences during the week of March sixteen through the twenty-seventh and the amount of time and hours I dedicated to working during those weeks as a teacher with the Baltimore City Public School System. I'm focused on areas of communication, staff to staff, school district communication, student to teacher communication, as well as workload. There were calendar expectations, lesson planning, meetings, more planning, and also the time that it took to focus on student wellness, gathering resources, creating new resources, getting rid of old resources, and also the amount of frequent check-ins with students and families to address the emotional workload, not only their emotional workload, but also my own workload, my emotional capacity. The calendar from March sixteen through the twenty-seventh, one system that I used to make sure that I was keeping track of my students and motivating was I created a daily selfie to my online classroom, and I have over, I believe, twenty pics that share with them just to keep them motivated, to maintain the connection with the students, make sure that we're connecting online, and also to demonstrate the humanity that goes into teaching, that we're not just robots going through the screen. So this is the amount of work that I had, that I was doing during the first couple of weeks, just to make sure that we still maintained a classroom. During those same two weeks, there were over forty occurrences of electronic correspondence between me and students and parents and all the staff. These were emails, notifications, reminders, texts, LMS messages between student and instructor. So here are two copies, two examples of them. This is one on Thursday, March nineteenth, where I announced that we will be hosting office hours during the week of March thirteenth through twenty-seventh. Here's a letter to the parents as well, and to the garden stating that I hope everything was well. Under the circumstances of our control, we'll have to move to a remote teaching. So this is all preparatory work, and I think that's what she thinks. I did a lot of preparatory work, making sure that the students were prepared for this pandemic. Responsibilities as well during those two, first two weeks were meetings. There were a number of meetings, not only within the school, but within my grade-level team or my subject area team, as well as the department, staff meetings, SST meetings, parent conferences, modifications, the amount of work that went into modifying course schedules, lesson plans, assignments, calendars, just to fit into this new structure so that students were successful. And so that's the areas I wanted to focus on today, the amount of projects and workset that I did during these two weeks. That being said, I wanted us to make sure that we had kept in mind that teachers should not work beyond the last day that students work. Thank you very much.
All right, and our final public comment, audio public comment comes from Jennifer DeRose.
My name is Jennifer DeRose. I'm a twenty-two-year Baltimore resident and homeowner and a parent of a current and former Baltimore City Public School students, two of my daughters. My daughter Beatrice McAllier is a senior at Baltimore City College right now. During the week of March sixteenth and all the weeks since then, my daughter's schooling continued from home because of the dedication and hard work on the spur of the moment of her teachers. For example, she had a teacher who sent out international baccalaureate problems and tests and held virtual office hours every day to help her and her classmates with the answers. She had another teacher who sent review materials out and provided individualized feedback through emails back and forth about students' individual projects. A third teacher developed and distributed new school-from-home calendars for the coming weeks with reading assignments and analytical work to do for each assignment. In short, her Baltimore City Public School teachers were extremely responsive and kept on working and teaching through even the earliest days of the COVID-19 crisis, despite the fact that they had no advance notice, as far as I'm aware. They just jumped in and continued educating our children. They should not be required to work an extra week at the end of the year without pay. Thank you very much.
Okay, and that, that was all a public comment. I'd just like to thank her on bosom is Karen Lauren. She really put it, helped me put everything together for this, so I just wanted to thank her for big help with this, but that was all our public comment for today.
Thank you, and thank you to the folks who submitted comments, both, both written as well as those that were taped. I just want to correct one thing that I did say. I mentioned a meeting that the board leadership has. It is on Thursday. I'm, I'm sorry, I've been home long enough that I'm getting my days mixed up. But on this Thursday at one o'clock, we will be meeting with BTU leadership. Also, yes?
I, I want you to finish your, your thought, but I just had a question and response to some of the public comment.
Sure. I, I simply want to say, just as many of the parents and folks who spoke said, that the board indeed does acknowledge the work that teachers did, as well as all of the other staff in this short turnaround time of the COVID-19, which has been an experience that none of us has, has, has ever had to, to deal with before. And so we, we, we are very much aware of what has happened. We are also aware that there are some things that we're going to need to do, even as we are finishing out this year, to be certain that we have everything in place for our students who deserve the very best when they go come back to us in school for next year. So again, thank you for the comments. We will be getting those and reviewing those. Where there have been some requests for information or responses, as I have been saying every week, we will get those responses back as quickly as we can. Please know that just as students are not in school currently, since Baltimore City is still in the shelter-at-home phase, our staff is not in the office either. So in some cases, we need to have people able to be back in the workplace to, to do full responses for some of what people are asking. Commissioner McFadden?
Thank you. I just, I, I wanted to just get some clarification for everyone on the waiver. I, we, based on what the board voted on last meeting, we voted to ask the state, for the CEO to ask the state for the waiver for, to adjust our calendar. And it was my understanding that we were working with teachers and the BTU to, to determine some innovative ways to adjust with those days. So, so is there any clarification that we, there seems to be some sort of disconnect in what is actually happening? And I would be interested in just hearing a little bit more clarification on where we are in the waiver process. I know I'm in school until the twenty-second of June, and there wasn't a lot of... I just wanted, I, I just want some of it clarified, just a little bit.
Certainly. I'm gonna ask Dr. Santalisis to be ready to, if she would like to speak to it as well. But what the, what the board voted on at our last meeting was to request the waiver from the state board. To my knowledge, it has not gone there yet, so there has been no action. And that waiver was to, to change the end date for students from the twenty-second to the fifteenth of June. Nothing has, has happened there. Are Dr. Santalisis, would you like to, or staff? No- nothing has, has happened there. Uh, Dr. Santalisis, would you like to, or staff, would you like to, uh, add to that?
Sure. So we did submit the waiver and the intent behind the waiver was to end the instructional days, uh, for students and families on the fifteenth. Um, we have always, I have always acknowledged, um, the work that many teachers did across the district. We also acknowledged, um, that we communicated, um, at the BTU's request, um, to principals that, um, spring break, um, was in fact time, uh, for teachers to have off. But I have always recognized that large numbers of teachers, as we heard tonight, from both parents and teachers, um, did work during that time. Uh, the waiver was for the instructional days. The point that I have made, which Commissioner McFadden, um, I think might be referencing, is our commitment to work with the union to see what those additional days could look like, given that I was also hearing from other groups of teachers that they wanted to make sure that they had professional support, right, in learning, online learning, as much as people got classrooms up. We heard from a number of teachers that that week of training was not enough. I think I've said from the very beginning, and again, this might, I think is what, um, Commissioner McFadden has referenced and what I'm still committed to, is looking at, are there innovative ways to use that time to be able to support the development that a number of teachers have reached out? It is not just a kind of cutoff, everybody has to stay, um, until the twenty-third with no discussion. So we are, I, I fully acknowledge that if we need to accelerate those discussions and that planning, absolutely we can. Uh, I have been hearing and having my own meetings with teachers across the district. I know our team has been meeting with BTU and we're more than happy to accelerate those, uh, discussions. But again, uh, we, I've said from the beginning and I continue that we will, we are open to kind of creative ways of using those days to help support teacher learning and preparation for what we can all see, based on what MSDE and others have put out nationally, um, is going to require even more support for teachers to be able to navigate virtual platforms and, and other, um, and other new tools within, you know, within new configuration of schools. So, um, again, there, I, I've said that before. Thank you, Commissioner McFadden, for remembering it. I'm saying it again tonight. And again, more than happy to accelerate those discussions, um, but absolutely, I have acknowledged and will continue to acknowledge.
Hey, uh, Madam Chair, may I, may I follow up with, uh, the statement by Dr. Santalisis? Is Ronan Reed?
Go ahead, uh, Commissioner Reed, yes.
Okay, uh, I'm just thinking intuitively, Dr. Santalisis. If, if there's a training process or a reeducation process where staff can be geared up for the fall, that would make it so they wouldn't have to come back early in August because they would get some of the, the training they would need and the effectiveness they need when it's cooler. They say they're worried about the heat. So if they do this now in June, they won't have to come back as early in, in August. I'm just thinking intuitively. Is that, is that part of your thought process?
Sure, and, and I, and I think Commissioner Reed, that is the part that we really need to work through and discuss because I don't want to assume that that is the case, you know, for every teacher. One of the other pieces that we're trying, you know, that we're looking into, a number of schools, a number of districts, um, are supporting some teacher learning virtually, right, on how you virtually, um, get further acclimation to a technological platform. And that is something, you know, that people could do, um, from home. We're all in a different phase of distance learning. Uh, and so that's part of why, you know, I had them come out and said, oh, it's gonna happen this way, that way, because that's part of, you know, that planning that needs to be done. Um, and so this really was an attempt to make sure that we were getting people even more ready because I have acknowledged from the beginning that none of us, right, knew that the world was gonna look this way for school. And so it has always been a question of, you know, how do we provide some of those additional supports? And it's been a communication, which is why there's no, you know, there's no plan now because that's, that's part of, you know, the exchange and that, that's part of the dialogue that we need to have. And like I said, I've been getting feedback from teachers as well. And we, we are working to make sure that folks are set. And you're right. A lot of that orientation can happen virtually. There's a lot of different things we can do, but, you know, we have, we actually have to have the conversations to get to what those are.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Um, Madam Chair, this is, um, Commissioner Richardson. I just also wanted to say, cause, um, many of the commissioners were, we received a ton of emails from teachers and there was a tone or a message that was in many of them that suggested that the board feels like teachers don't want to work or are not working. And that's problematic for me because it was written in a way as if someone told them that board members have said this. And so to whomever is saying or spreading that message that the board of commissioners feel like teachers are not working, um, I am highly offended by that. That we, we respect our teachers. We, we know that our teachers have put in a tremendous amount of time and energy. Um, my own daughters are still being educated virtually. And so I don't know who has put that message out there, but that is not true. Um, as it relates to me and, and my fellow colleagues, that is not true, okay? And so I want teachers to hear that, that we respect you, we, we honor the work that you're doing. We see it in our homes and we see it every day. And so we want to make sure that that message is out there. Thank you.
This is Bandima, can you hear me now? Hello?
Yes, Commissioner Bandima.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, Chair, um, Jen, may I make a statement as well?
Go right ahead.
I, um, I want to join in with, uh, Commissioner Richardson. I am honored to say that the teachers in Baltimore City have done an ex- wonderful job making that transition from the classroom to online. As a college instructor, doctorate student, who's been teaching face-to-face and online, when we go online to teach a class, we go through a, almost a six-month training for online teaching. And for teachers and faculty, uh, teachers and staff and administrators, including Dr. Santalisa, who went from face-to-face, online, it is commendable that these teachers and Baltimore City Public School, from what I have heard and observed, have done an outstanding job. So I, I'm, I don't know who would say such a thing, but our teachers and our staff and our administrators have been working extremely hard, online, face-to-face, and visiting students at their homes and delivering food and services. So I agree with you, Commissioner Richardson. Thank you for bringing that up and I just want to make my statement as well. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Bandima, um, yeah. And, and again, I, I think what we're all, we're all hopefully, um, hoping that teachers are hearing us when we say, um, how much we value what you've done. Uh, there is a concern, however, when misinformation is, uh, is, is passed. And so we want to be sure that people do understand. We've requested a waiver. Please also understand that, um, even as we are ending this challenging year, we have another challenging year that is coming and, and we need to, we need to, uh, find out what the lessons are that we've learned from this initial experience so that we can be ready and our students can be ready for the future. So thank you again. Thanks to all of those folks who, uh, who have commented. I want to go back to the consent agenda and see if, uh, there are any additional items that board members would like to have removed. If not, I'm gonna look at the three that have been, um, and this, uh, uh, first item, um, our student commissioner, um, um, is able to vote. So that's item six point zero one. Renay- the renaming request for Hollibird Elementary Middle School. Uh, there was a question, uh, concerning the, uh, uh, public input. And so I'm gonna, if, if staff is available, if you could, uh, uh, address, uh, Commissioner Jane, James Hassan's question.
Hi, good.
Good evening, everyone. This is Teresa Jones, Chief Achievement and Accountability Officer. Um, we're gonna have the renaming request, um, discussed with the board, with Principal Papas, who I think is ready to jump in. Um, and then we also have Ben Goldberg from the Office of Achievement and Accountability, who has also been a key player in facilitating the completion of this request. Principal Papas, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Teresa. Sorry about that. Good afternoon, or good evening, um, school board and Dr. Santalisis. Um, we have been really excited, uh, to go through this process of these program renaming. Um, we originally reached out because we have the exciting opportunity to move into our brand-new Net Zero School Building in the coming school year. Um, and there was some confusion with regard to whether our program name was Hollibird Elementary Middle School uh, or Hollibird Academy. Um, several years ago, uh, prior to my, um, uh, prior to my honor to leave Hollibird, um, the school had been rebranded as Hollibird Academy. Um, as we kind of explored this, we realized that it was actually never, um, an official program change. Um, and so we, we wanted to know how we could, um, uh, how we could, uh, make sure that our name was aligned with our program. Um, so we reached out to Ben and we reached out to the Office of OAA. Um, they shared with us that we would need to do a community vote. Um, we did our community vote at our Hollibird Math Night, actually on March eleventh, uh, right prior to the state closure. Um, we received forty-five ballots that evening. Thirty of our ballots cast were cast the name of Hollibird Academy for the Hollibird Elementary Middle School. And we had two ballots that were right in for our other choices. And we also prepared a memo and Ben has prepared a PowerPoint for you this evening with some talking points around that. Um, but one of the points that I really wanted to underscore is that as we move into our brand-new building, um, it's important that we communicate one name, uh, one voice to our community of who we are. Um, we have been Hollibird Academy in access, uh, for the four years, the three years that I've been at Hollibird and for the years prior. And I'm just, I'm very excited that our identity will now be our official program name. Um, from what I understand, it will be on all of our official signage, on our logo, um, on our gym sign. So we're really hopeful, uh, that this will be, uh, voted on and approved, um, so that we can get it right, so to speak, with our official name, uh, and school program being accurate.
Thank you very much for that. Um, and thanks, thanks for doing the work. And just to be clear, my question is not on the name. Or, I mean, so in policy FFA, it says that in order to rename in the regulations that there must be a renaming committee established that includes the school leader, the school family council, um, a school leader designate, which is a participating community member, um, and then the SGA council. And so I'm just wondering, I just want to confirm, I lo- I love the getting parent vote at math night. Um, I think that's important. Um, but just making sure that the policy, the regulations, and I don't need to see the PowerPoint unless somebody wants to share it. It's just was the, were the regulations of the policy followed? Was there an external community member that's not part of the school that was on that committee? And as long as that happened, I'm good. It just was, that wasn't in our information.
No, and absolutely. So we engaged, um, after Ben gave us the information, we engaged, our PTA liaison is actually a parent of one of our pre-K scholars and a teacher at our school. Um, we engaged our guidance counselor and our, uh, uh, community school coordinator Cynthia Rodriguez. And we also had, uh, 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 communication, I guess, with our, with our students, with our school family council, um, so that we were able, you know, we, when we came together, we were able to decide to have the vote at math night. So we did engage our PTA. Um, we shared with the, we shared with our PTA at one of our meetings, um, our proposal to rename Hollibird. We shared when we would be doing the vote. Um, and so the committee, I, I suppose, was our PTA president, our school counselor, community school coordinator, myself, and my assistant principal.
Perfect. And then the, and, and external community member that has no children in the school, like a business person, cause, and, and again, thi- this is a relatively easy name change, right?
Yeah.
But I'm trying to tee us up for times when we have, you know, bitter battles about schools that are merging and to make sure we set ourselves up with people following and adhering to the regulations. Um, so just, so a note to staff, when we get these kind of presentations, just making sure that it's clear in there that they have established a team that has the right members and that the team met, um, that'd be great. So I, I'm, I'm good, unless you would like to, to share more.
No, absolutely. And, and we do have several community members involved. Um, Dorothy Kealan, who's one of our, uh, church partners, um, attends every SFC meeting, was part of that proposal as well. Uh, and we, we did work, as I said, to kind of in, make sure we could engage the PTA and make sure they were aware of the direction we were headed, uh, before we started on a math journey.
Okay, and just for any other principals listening, I think the, the spirit of the rule is not to engage after you've decided, but to bring people on in the initial deciding, the initial generating of ideas.
And Ben, is there anything that you wanted to add or share with regard to our process?
No, it's a, yeah, I mean, thank you, uh, Commissioner James Hassan. I appreciate your point in wanting to adhere to the policy. Um, yeah, as you noted, this obviously was a little different, um, as, you know, Principal Novak Papas here walked into a situation in which there was an informal name that was already popularly used, um, but we have still tried to, yes, adhere to the policy fully, um, even though it is a bit of a different situation. Yep.
Excellent. Thank you. Madam Chair, I have nothing else.
All right.
Okay, uh, thank you. Then, um, we'll, we'll move to see if there's a, a motion then to, um, approve the renaming. This item six point zero.
Move approval. James?
Richard, James, is there a second?
Second, Richardson.
Thank you. Uh, and I'll do the roll call for those in favor. Commissioner Bandima? Okay. Let me know if you, if you see a signal from her. Commissioner Frank?
Yes.
Commissioner James Hassan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yeah.
And I'm in favor. Did we, if we hear or see anything from Commissioner Bandima?
Michelle, give us a thumbs up or a thumbs down. There you go. Thumbs up.
Okay. Um, anyone opposed? No, so we, so we have nine in favor, one absent. Thank you. This, uh, this item passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Uh, the, the, the next item that was pulled in this was, uh, the, no, the problem. Congratulations, um, at Hollibird Elementary Middle.
Or Hollibird Academy.
The next item is six point zero two. Um, it was, it was, the request was to pull it for a vote. Uh, so that's the operator renewal. Um, is there a motion, um, to, uh, to adopt this, um, this item, six point zero two?
Move approval, Frank.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Richardson.
Thank you. Okay, um, those in favor, Commissioner Bandima?
Thumbs up or down? Okay, thumbs up.
Okay, Commissioner Frank?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner James Hassan?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Madam Chair, I'm a-
Madam Chair, I'm abstaining from this one.
Okay, okay, I'm in favor. We have one abstention, one absent, and seven in favor. Okay, so this item is approved. The last one that was pulled and was fifteen point zero six promotional items and personal protective equipment, the question was around the promotional items portion and how this different, I think you said, from previous action that the board has taken for promotional items. That is correct.
Good evening, this is Blaine Lipsky, Director of Facility Maintenance and Operations. I would like to explain or provide a response. At the time of the previous request of the board, the, the vendors were not providing PPE equipment, personal protective equipment. Since that's time, because of the COVID nineteen crisis, two of the companies have provided or are available for the PPE. So we're not trying to change the wording of the original award of these vendors, which was promotional items. We're adding personal protective equipment to their increase to afford us to purchase needed equipment at any time.
So Mr. Lipsky, is this then a modification to a contract? Cause it was presented to us like it was a brand-new contract.
No, it's, it is, actually, it is a modification that the companies that were previously awarded are now selling PPE, personal protective equipment, to sustain their livelihood out there since the system. So they are adding additional resources and we're trying to be on hand to prepare ourselves for additional vendors.
So the roughly, I apologize for my memory, but the roughly eight hundred thousand that we approved for promotional items and PBIS that was framed to me was going to be predominantly promotional items around commencement and graduation. This is just a revision of that? Cause it looks brand-new, so it's not eight hundred thousand plus the one, the amount today?
No, it's the, the board approved the eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, six seventy back in March the tenth for the graduation ceremony stuff. We're requesting a hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars to top it out to a million dollars to use. There are chances that the schools may have some graduation activities for the kids, the seniors and such, but we just wanna make sure we have additional money in there to buy any PPE equipment that we may need.
And that, that's perfect. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't spending one point eight million.
No, 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 no.
And PPE, in which case we need to look at some other sources for some PPE, so.
Well, they'll be coming for it, yes.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Sure.
With that, Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and move approval. Unless others have questions.
I second that motion, Madam Chair.
Linda, we cannot hear you.
Sorry, I got, I got the motions. I can't, this going off and on, I'm messing myself up, sorry about that. So the motion was made by Commissioner James, seconded by Commissioner McFadden. Those in favor, Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Frank?
Yes.
Commissioner James Assange?
Yes.
Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Rob?
Yeah.
And I'm in favor. No, no, anyone, no one opposed, no abstentions. So we have eight in favor and one absent. Okay, so now, is there a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed, is there a second?
I second it, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner McFadden. And those in favor, Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Commissioner Frank?
He looked like he mouthed yes, but he was under.
Okay, Commissioner James Assange?
Yes, Commissioner Frank, that was a yes.
Okay, Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yeah.
And I'm in favor, no one opposed, no abstentions. So that is eight in favor, one absent. Thank you. Okay, at this point, we have a information and discussion item, which is looking at the, from the office, I'm sorry, from the Office of New Initiatives. So I'm going to turn it over to that office for those items. They come under number seven on your agenda.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm Angela Alvarez, I'm the Executive Director of the Office of New Initiatives. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, yes.
So I'm also gonna have Kim Coleman from my team join.
Hi, everyone, this is Kim Coleman, Specialist New Initiatives.
So we are sharing for information, the board will vote on June ninth. Location requests for two schools. One is for Baltimore Collegiate School for Boys, the other is for Clay Hill Public Charter School. And according to our board policy, school operators are responsible for securing their facilities, as you guys are aware. But as a board, you have to vote on whether or not to approve those locations as a, as a school facility site. These requests go through vetting process. And so it's reviewed with relevant offices like facilities, design and construction, finance, our team, as well as the charter and operator-led school advisory board. Part of what we consider when we look at all applications is the rationale for them to move in the proposed location. So sometimes it's because there's a new school, sometimes it's for other reasons. The building readiness and whether or not it needs any renovation or repair plans and the thoroughness of those plants. The financing plan and acquisition of the facility and to include if there's any renovation, to make sure they have a detailed plan and are able to afford those changes. A detailed timeline for project, including the move schedule, to make sure they can happen in time to accommodate students. Description of facility and architectural drawings, the recruitment and enrollment strategies. So if you're moving, if you're currently located in one part of town, but you're moving to another part of town, how, you know, how that will impact enrollment. That they have a transportation plan and have, you know, analyzed and have solutions for traffic challenges that come with dismissal on arrival of students at school locations, particularly if you're in a novel location or a location that hasn't acted as a school in some time. That they have an engagement plan and have thorough, thorough notification of providing information about their plans to their school community and that they have evidence of support from both their school community and the community in which they tend to, they wanna locate. So they have to provide affirmative evidence that they have that support as, as all of the things that we review in this process.
So the information that Angela just detailed, the considerations that charter schools provide us, information on when submitting a request to relocate or move into a facility is due to city schools by March first. The process typically begins in January, but some timeline accommodations were necessary this year in order to be responsive to contextual realities. These materials have been vetted by district offices, like facilities, finance, schools, and putting those by an operator-led schools advisory board. And at this point in the process, we share each request with the board for review and preparation for a June ninth vote on each request. So the first request comes from Baltimore Collegiate School for Boys, which is presently temporarily housed in the Professional Development Center Building, which is gonna be used as swing space for the Twenty First Century Schools Program in the coming school year. And Collegiate is requesting board approval to relocate to twenty-five twenty-five Kirk Avenue in Baltimore. It's the former school site from Monarch Academy. They have signed a letter of intent to enter into a lease agreement with the children's school to begin occupying the building July first, twenty twenty. That agreement would allow Collegiate to remain in the Monarch Building for two years with the option of renewing for a third year. And the second request comes from Clay Hill Public Charter School, operated by Patterson Park Public Charter School, Inc. Later on the agenda is a related request coming from Clay Hill. And the prospective location of the school is the former Our Lady of Fatima Catholic School, owned by the Archdiocese of Baltimore, and it's located at sixty-four hundred East Pratt Street. In early April, the Archdiocese and PBBCS, Inc. came to an agreement on terms and they signed a lease proposal agreement for a two-year lease with a ninety-day exploratory period built in. So they would intend to move into the space to complete facility work to cure building readiness issues and ensure they're ready to welcome students when they open.
Okay, are there, are there any questions?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Roberts, I have a question for Angela and her, and her team. Where are we with assisting parents that had committed to the school on relocating their students for the twenty twenty-one school year?
Sure.
Go ahead, no, you go ahead, Kim.
So the school did not receive as many student enrollment applications as, as they had planned and, and, you know, COVID certainly impacted that. So they had a hundred sixty seat offers and only thirty families accepted those seat offers. So since the, this, what, the decision to make a request of the board to delay opening a year, the school has offered a wide array of supports to each of those families in procuring a seat at a different school from, from email blasts to Zoom meetings to one-on-one supports for families of those thirty families that had accepted a seat. And so our office has also been in touch with enrollment choice and transfer if any of those thirty families do continue to encounter obstacles in finding a seat for their, their child. But it's a small number.
So at this point, can we confirm that they have all been, they had, they have all found a school for the upcoming school year or no?
We can, we can get back to you with that information. We had, we just need to disaggregate it so we can come back with, to you with that information. As I shared, and just so people understand, when people apply to charter schools, they often also have their names in multiple hats. So we can, we can see who, who's out there without a seat and get back to you about that. We've been trying to work collaboratively with both the school and enrollment and supporting families. But often families are, you know, considering multiple options. But we can get back to you with affirmative numbers.
Thank you for that, Ms. Alvarez. As a charter parent, I understand the process, which is why I am, I asked the question essentially around them finding somewhere to be in the, in the fall. With families applying to multiple schools, that means that at other charter schools, essentially there are less or any spots available to that point. And I just wanted to ensure that those students had somewhere to be in the fall.
Yeah, we agree. So we will, we'll get back to you with that information. We agree that that's important, that we provide the support to ensure that families have a place in it. So again, we'll, we'll get back to you with more information on that.
This is Commissioner Frank, just a question of Commissioner Roberts. Which, which students were you just speaking of?
The thirty families that were accepted and had already committed to Clay Hill for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, just in case people are a little bit confused, the next item that we're getting ready to present on programmatic and other waivers is a request from Clay Hill to delay their opening by a year. So that's where these questions are coming, coming from. So they were approved to begin this fall as their opening year. As a person shared in public comment, there's been a number of kind of unforeseeable challenges that sort of plagued the school's readiness during this year. There, you know, and COVID made that even more complicated, having to do with the facility as well as having enough students to sustain opening at the budget necessary for, for opening. So they did not receive enough applications, even, you know, early on, they had reduced their size a bit and their budget was developed at a reduced size. But they still were kind of short of, of that goal and what's needed in order to prepare for opening. When you first open a school, there's a lot more expense, hard costs for schools in terms of facilities and other, other, other items. Just to remind everybody, they're, you know, they would have been entering a five-year contract that started July one. They're approved to serve students in grades K through eight at full capacity. They'll serve five hundred and forty students. We just talked about the location and it's a replication of Patterson Park. So we recommended the board vote to amend the contract term. So it begins in school year twenty-one, twenty-two. And so the five-year term will go from July one, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. That would allow the school to have more time in terms of preparing the location for readiness for students, as well as to recruit a sufficient student body to be able to open, you know, to be ready for that. So this is why we asked the board to approve this request. Okay, so the next, sorry. Sorry, was there a question? Okay, sorry. So the next request that we had before the board is we would like to gain your approval to submit a request to MSDE to waive the requirement to take applications from new charter schools in this current school year. You know, we've been preparing for charter applications, but there's a lot of uncertainty in terms of the upcoming year. And so with these challenges, we're really concerned about, there's so many kind of unknowns in terms of what new requirements may be. And it's a time where our school community is deeply engaged in preparing for the upcoming school year, which may be more virtual than we've had in the, in the past. And so there's just a lot of unknowns, similar to the renewal. There's a lot of unknowns in terms of what the implications of COVID are gonna be, whether they are a short-term, impact only this school year or will it impact school operations for years to come. Our current application doesn't really consider that. Additionally, community engagement participation is a key component of the process of reviewing and approving applications for new schools. And so in particular, in this round, we're anticipating five applications from existing school communities. And we wanna make sure it's at a time where school communities can be fully engaged. Right now, with COVID, many people are doing double duty in terms of, you know, working as well as being caregivers. We wanna make sure that there's a consistency of approach in terms of how we look at applications. And, you know, there's been challenges with virtual tools in terms of ensuring robust participation and access to all communities, as well as ensuring consistency that, through those things. And so those are concerns for us. And so we would like to submit a request to the state to delay the process for a year. And so we recommend the board vote to authorize the submission of a waiver request to MSDE.
Okay, and again, the, these votes will be on June the ninth.
So, Madam Chair, may I ask a question of the Southwest team? Do you anticipate putting forward? Uh, do you anticipate, uh, putting forward a waiver for all renewals for the 2021 school year? Um, so if we do, I think charters might benefit from knowing that, you know, sooner rather than stress later.
They, yeah, so we, um, you voted tonight to approve her, um...
Yeah, I, 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 but I'm talking more like moving on forward. So like for the next, so those that are coming up for renewal, the following year won't have this year's data either.
Oh, so we haven't made a determination yet about what we do about the years after this year. Um, so I think that's something we want to make sure that we do engagement with our school community. Different, we've been having a lot of conversations with other jurisdictions around how they're handling these kind of review processes. Um, and so, um, I think we need to put some more thought around, um, do you, do we delay everybody, you know, multiple groups? Or, or do we look at some alternatives? And so we want to do that after we've had some, uh, engagement with stakeholders and we have a little bit more understanding of what state requirements will look like for the upcoming school year, uh, before we, we say no. There are challenges with moving forward and there are challenges with postponing, um, uh, in terms of how data, we have, you know, there's data with schools that become older, the more time you put in between that. And so we want to make sure we can engage with all of our stakeholders and really think through the implications of each of those things. And so it's not really a clear path at this point in terms of, uh, beyond, you know, um, the, the recommendation and the decision you guys made tonight to postpone for this year. It's not clear that we should continue that or not. Um, and so we will come back to the board, but we want to make sure that we do robust engagement with our stakeholders around that and have clear guidance from the state.
Perfect. Thank you. I did, I didn't want to pull that item earlier when I knew I could ask it here. Um, so I appreciate that.
Madam Chair, I have a question. Commissioner Frank?
Go ahead.
Ms. Alvarez, has the Maryland State Department of Education given any indication one way or another or offered any advice in this area for new charter applications in Baltimore around the state?
So, um, so no, I don't have like clear guidance. I know, like in other jurisdictions, there are fewer kind of charter schools. And so there are, people have fewer applications, so they may not be necessarily, um, and then they're not necessarily a consistent application process in the way that we are, uh, because it's, um, they receive applications less frequently. Um, and so in talking with my counterparts within the state, um, uh, some people are just trying to figure out what to do if they cross that bridge and are looking more at, um, postponing because they haven't necessarily received applications where we're in a different situation where we, while we haven't received applications, we know we have letters of intent. Um, so it puts us in a little bit of a, a different circumstance than other people.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Ms. Alvarez?
Question?
Madam Chair, this is Ronald McFadden. I'm curious to know, um, about the cap. Will the enrollment cap, do you think it may need to be adjusted, um, you, moving forward in the future? And will, and if it does, it'll just come back to the board for us to consider that, right?
Actually, I'm for Clay Hill.
Yeah, for Clay Hill.
Yes, yeah, we would bring it back. So we sort of made an informal adjustment, um, in this year, um, because you consider caps, uh, prior to the budget, uh, and so we, we work with them to, to, to make that officially part of their contract. And you...
Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay. So just again, uh, we will, we will, uh, bring these information items back, uh, for, for act, um, on June the 9th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, take care. Dr. Sanz Alisas, I'm going to, uh, go on mute and turn it over to you now for the CEO's comments and updates and things.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And since I have a hard time, uh, reading my comments and I don't want my large face in the screen, I'm going to just keep my video off for a bit. Um, but, uh, thank you very much, everybody. Um, first, I would like to, um, just say thank you to all of the families who have responded, um, to our survey, um, that ran from, uh, late March until May 10th. I want to thank our, um, Office of Assessment and Accountability and all of the, uh, school-based folks who supported families, uh, responding to the survey. We had about 50% of our student population, um, which is way above, um, many other surveys that responded. But I would say to families, um, that we are going to continue to take responses, um, if you have them. Uh, we should know, I think it's important for the board to know that 52% of our families reported, um, a need for additional food support. Uh, 25% of families reported not having access to internet device or a computer at home. Uh, we also believe that that actual number is higher, um, given, excuse me, the relationship in, at least in some of the answers being reported online. And then finally, um, we had 18% of the families surveyed who responded, reported having, um, no internet access in their home. And I think this points to, um, the fact that moving into the fall, we are going to continue to see, um, the access to technology, to internet and broadband be an issue. We even had, um, a report earlier today from some of our very own Baltimore City High School students who were joining with, excuse me, community organizations and leading on their own. Um, a call for Comcast and others to extend broadband. We continue to work here, um, within city schools and with our local partners, both civic and community partners, as well as, um, our elected officials to, um, to really, again, continue to expand. Any family that does not yet have a device and need a device, uh, please do continue to reach out to us through the hotline. Um, I don't have the number right here in front of me, but we will get it and I'll make sure, Madam Chair, that we, um, report that out again this evening. Um, I think it's important for the board, um, to know that really through the work dedication of city school staff, volunteers, community partners, uh, city agencies, that approximately 15,500 devices have been distributed to, to students and families as of today. And we are currently in the midst of our second round of, of Chromebook distribution, as I just referenced. Um, as of today, we have served, our team has served over 400,000 meals through 18 city schools' food sites, um, distributing more than 10,500 food boxes and 137,000 World Central Kitchen meals. And that is to date, and that is just a, an amazing lift, um, just from, you know, staff, partners, uh, community members really banding together to support our families. Uh, and nearly 18,000 meals have been provided, uh, through home delivery meal service. Um, so we want to thank our partners, um, in Baltimore City, uh, for providing more than 2 million additional meals at 75 locations, particularly our colleagues in, um, in Wrenton Parks. We will be providing a more detailed report to the board, um, in coming weeks, uh, just as we begin to end, um, you know, the, the last days of the school year, excuse me, and as we begin to plan both fiscally and operationally, um, for the road ahead. Um, a number of people have asked whether or not there will be athletics, um, this fall. And, you know, if so, whether academic, um, our academic eligibility, uh, policy will apply. I think first, it is really important to note, uh, just how trying this season has been for our student athletes, especially our seniors, um, to miss their spring season, uh, this year. And, um, I want to thank all of the teachers and coaches, uh, principals, families that have really reached out to put, um, our collective community arms around these, uh, student athletes, uh, as they culminated their career. Uh, with regard to the fall, um, unfortunately, like everything else, uh, we really don't know for sure what the situation will be or what our directives, um, what the directives will be that we receive from the state. Um, but at this time, you know, we are planning for a variety, um, of scenarios and, you know, welcome feedback, um, from, from families as well. Uh, regarding the implementation of our academic eligibility policy for student athletes, um, our athletics office has been leading an internal consultation process to explore possible approaches and implications. This includes engaging athletic directors and principals, ILEDs, our Office of Legal Counsel, uh, among others. We, um, will continue and have been in continuous communication with state athletic associations and districts, other school districts across Maryland, um, to, to understand how they intend to approach their academic eligibility policies so we can make sure that we are taking that into account as well. Um, we don't yet have a final determination. I do expect to receive, um, a recommendation from our internal team in the coming days. Uh, once, um, that's been reviewed and approved, uh, with the proposed, uh, approach, I will bring that, uh, before the board, uh, really with the intention of providing clarity for our student athletes, their families and our schools as soon as possible. Um, the other piece I think is important, uh, for families and for the public to know is that, uh, we are beginning a series of virtual listening tours, um, that are happening and starting next Monday. They will go through next Friday, um, and we will be, um, our first parent support group is happening on June 3rd. All with the intent of, one, getting feedback from families about what worked well, uh, during the spring transition, things that they see and have experienced as strengths, um, as well as beginning to, um, get some initial feedback from families about possible, um, uh, possible configurations for school reopening in the fall. Uh, this is also accompanied, uh, by, uh, ongoing conversations, um, with PCAB. And I, I actually want to thank PCAB just for their ongoing, uh, soundboarding, caucusing of parents and families and, uh, really, um, becoming very abreast very quickly with the state, uh, document that I know Board Chair Chinia, uh, referenced earlier, which I will continue to recommend to families, um, and frankly, everyone, to get a sense of what some of the possible configurations for school might be. And PCAB has been great in giving some initial feedback and will continue our partnership with them. Um, and the other piece, uh, that I do think is important, uh, for folks to keep in mind is that as we, um, are entering, while, while we are clearly entering our final days of school, uh, we are also working very hard to, um, be able to put together, um, some of the, uh, components that will be necessary, uh, for, uh, opening, uh, school in the fall. Uh, we've just begun that planning, so there's nothing big yet. We are in the process of getting feedback from a variety, um, of partners, uh, as well as clearly more important, most importantly, our families, um, and then our, our staff. So, um, within the next coming weeks, uh, we ask for folks to, uh, begin, uh, really thinking about how they want to provide that feedback as we would like to, um, make sure again that we are taking all of that into account. I will also, um, give a thank you to the board and, um, highlight that I think the board's subcommittee meetings and listening, um, and feedback sessions are also going to be a real help and strength, um, in that process. Finally, um, what I would like to, uh, do is invite everyone to join us this Thursday at 9:30 a.m. Um, as we observe our third annual day, uh, of peace and remembrance. Um, in the past year, uh, we have lost another 12 students to gun violence for a total of 33 of our young people who have been murdered in the past three years. Uh, one student lost would clearly be too many. Uh, but the magnitude of the danger our young men and women face every day, um, still remains inconceivable and in many ways tragic in indescribable ways. Uh, due to the COVID pandemic, this ceremony will be held virtually this year on Facebook Live. I want to encourage everyone across the city to join us as we honor those who've lost, um, that, that we've lost as a school community and really commit ourselves to protecting young people. I know that in the midst of this COVID crisis, we are, um, aptly focused on, on health connected to the virus and so, and some of the basic, uh, needs that our families have. But I, I do think it is still important that we do not make light nor forget, nor let drop out of focus, um, the, the challenges with gun violence that are still, um, impacting our, um, our students, our families and our community. Um, and with that, Madam Chair, I am now going to ask, uh, Chief Grant Skinner, uh, for this evening.
Good evening, Dr. Sanz Alisas and Commissioners. Um, we have four appointments this evening. Uh, first, Joshua Bailey, Principal at Windsor Hills Elementary Middle School, is appointed Director of Teaching and Learning Operations effective July 1st. Next, Cynthia Wilson Shirley, um, interim principal at Gardenville Elementary School through June 30th, 2020, is reappointed, um, to continue as interim principal at Gardenville, um, from July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. Patricia Otway Drummond, uh, Principal at Hamilton Elementary Middle School is reassigned, uh, as MTSS Liaison effective July 1st. And Rachel Brunson, Principal at Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Elementary Middle School, is reassigned Assistant Principal at Cross Country Elementary Middle School effective July 1st. Thank you.
Great, thank you, uh, Chief Grant Skinner. Um, I do also, uh, want to acknowledge, um, that earlier this spring, uh, Cynthia Wilson Shirley was appointed as interim principal at Gardenville Elementary School for the balance of the school year. Um, uh, interim principal Wilson Shirley, uh, really stepped in very quickly near the end of the year. Um, but she, I think it's important that everybody know that she has dedicated 24 years of service to city schools, uh, starting as a language arts teacher at Harlem Park Middle School. She previously served as Assistant Principal at Dallas F. Nicholas Elementary School and Marie G. Ferring Elementary Middle School and as Co-Director of Connections, a community-based art school. Ms. Wilson Shirley holds a bachelor's degree from Morgan State University and a master's degree from Goucher College. With tonight's appointment, um, Principal Wilson Shirley will continue to serve as Chief Grant Skinner noted. And we, uh, say thank you to her at Gardenville Elementary School through the end of the 2020-21 school year. And with that, Madam Chair, that ends my, uh, comments for this evening, and I will turn it back to you.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Sanz Alisas. Were there any questions from anyone before I move on to the, uh, next agenda item?
Yes, Vernon Reed here.
Go ahead.
I guess the first one is, uh, this is part, two-part question. Forty-two, 52% of the students, uh, the families in terms of the survey, said that the food security and support was the biggest problem. Okay, school's going to end on the 15th. What's going to be, how's that gap going to be filled between the 15th of June and hypothetically, the 15th? the 15th of September? And I guess my other question is, it's dovetailing. I mean, thinking in terms of trauma and resiliency. How do we gauge what the kids need and how can we be prepared to rectify any problems, say 15th of September? So it's, so I'm thinking like a date, we're in school for two weeks and we get the feeling in terms of what they need. How can we do that? Thank you.
Sure, Commissioner Reed, and thank you for the question. So on the first question, the, the food challenges for many of our families is something that we have absolutely been paying close attention to. I think where we are now is, one, really getting a sense of what the city's capacity will be moving forward. We have been very fortunate in city schools, which is not necessarily true, by the way, in every jurisdiction. We have been very fortunate to partner with the city and city agencies in actually increasing our families' access to food. Liz Marqueta, who heads up Food and Nutrition for City Schools, and her team have done a fabulous job in really trying to push very early and consistently, along with the city, for more shelf-stable meals and food for families. We know ultimately, most families would prefer to be cooking their own food and preparing their own meals. And so there really has been a push in recent weeks, more for greater access to food pantries, but also fresh foods, grocery boxes. So I, I don't think, you know, it's fair to say that the city is, you know, ready tomorrow for us to turn it over, but we have been working with the goal of knowing that fiscally we will have limitations in, in how long we can sustain the level of food distribution that we have been engaged in, particularly as the district faces a fiscal loss that is incredibly severe with the closing of school buildings for this long of a period. I would say the other piece that is, that we are considering is what would normally be our summer feeding program, and really looking to see how and if that is feasible to continue, because we know even prior to COVID, that our summer food and nutrition programming really helped bridge the gap for many of our city schools' families. So I don't have a definite answer for you, but I think we will be working with the board to really do some, frankly, cost-benefit analysis of fiscally, how much can we take on as a school district, as well as really continuing to leverage our partnerships with community organizations, with state organizations, where we're hopeful that there may be some additional resources in the city to, to support family, families being able to eat. So we're, we're working on that, but it is, we are reaching a point where, where we're having to, you know, take account of both our fiscal responsibility, as well as the very real need that you pointed out of a number of our families. So, Allison, before I dive into social emotional needs, did you want to jump in on some of the feeding question?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Sanzalisis. I wanted to add one other resource available to students in terms of the food, students and families, is under the recently passed federal legislation, there is a new program called the Pandemic EBT, or PEBT Program, that will be available to all families in the schools, in city schools. Because we're a community eligibility provision district, all of our families are eligible for this program, and this is a program that's meant to provide an income source to families that kind of replaces the value of the free meals that they would have received under the, under the school lunch program. And so the households would receive approximately $114 a month in benefits for each school-aged child in their household, and so they either would access that through their SNAP card, if they're a SNAP recipient, that, that value, per child value would be added to their SNAP card, or if they are not, then there would be a process that, that the Department of Human Services is working through about how to provide those resources to families who are not currently eligible for SNAP, but would be eligible under Baltimore City for the PBBET program, which is all of our families. So that's just another way that, another income support that will be out there for our families to, that they can use at grocery stores to access the kind of shelf-stable food that Dr. Sanzalisis was talking about, to give families opportunity to have some more increased buying power at the grocery store to support the food needs of their family.
And thank you, Chief Perkins Cohen, for that, because that, that is an important tool and one that I neglected to mention, so thank you. With regard to your second question, Commissioner, we have, I, you know, matter of fact, I, I had a couple of check-ins earlier this week and I guess today, because it's just Tuesday. But this question about the, the mental health, the social emotional health of our students, and, you know, and a number of cases, our staff, is one that we have been discussing. I think that we have a couple of, frankly, bright spots that we can build on from the past, you know, 10 to 12 weeks. And the first being the way that so many of our teachers and ground-level staff have really utilized the elements of our adopted curriculum, K through 8, that actually have embedded opportunities for wellness check-ins, those connections within the actual curriculum. I can even speak, you know, just my, my daughter's ability to be able to check in daily with her teacher and have circle time, so things that are like, like virtual meeting time where young people actually do get to share. So I think that's one piece. I think the second piece that we've seen is that a number of our related service providers have been checking in, and I, in, in a couple of conversations with seniors, graduating seniors that I had, one, one student pointed out very directly that he felt appreciated and saw as vital the calls that he was getting from his guidance counselor on a daily basis. And another one was getting calls from a school psychologist that he had a very good relationship with, and that those wellness check-ins have been one of the strengths of our practice during the time, during this time, that we are now really looking at how to build out. The other piece is, again, some of the door-to-door work that our staff and partners are doing right now as we speak, actually going out and finding, you know, we have, we've had about 85% of our young people logging in and connecting, and we've already reduced that initial 15% gap in students we have touched and connected with by a couple of thousand students after only going out a week or two. And so those practices with partners, as well as with our existing staff, have been some of the bright spots in this crisis, in that we have seen the power of strong relationships between adults and students that we will be able to build on. I think larger questions, excuse me, have to do with what has continued to be the case, which was the case pre-COVID-19, and that was making sure we are connecting our young people to the appropriate mental health services on one end, making sure they have access to those supports, but also creating nurturing school environments and cultures that actually help to support healing for young people by connecting. We know that there are many students across the city, and I think as was noted earlier, that are benefiting from the connection and the relationship that they have with adults, with their school community, that their families have, and that that for a lot of young people has been a lifeline. And so the question is, how are we more deliberate about that? You know, shout out to our wellness team and the central wellness team that is in the process now of kind of documenting some of that, formalizing what does that look like at greater scale across the district. But, but absolutely, I mean, we can look at any international disaster or even natural challenges that have happened previously and know that our young people are going to need additional support. And so we are working on that now.
Thank you. Any other? Thank you, Dr. Sanzalisis. And I'm, checking with board committees to see if any of the committees want to do a brief report, or are, or are your reports written at this point? I know we've been, it's been mentioned a couple of times that we've begun helping in terms of the process of looking ahead, but is there anything additional from Operations Or policy?
Andy, your mic's not on. Commissioner Chinia, Andy was, I think he was.
Is he talking?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sorry. Thanks, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say we had a packed agenda. We looked at the Fiscal 21-26 Capital Improvement Plan, the Comprehensive Educational Studies Master Plan, which we, we looked at today, nine procurement items, technology, infrastructure and information, and then we had a really terrific discussion, discussion on the recovery plan academically beginning next year. So thank the staff for a really terrific presentation, a lot of information discussed. Thanks.
Thank you.
And I would, as far as policy, we had a wonderful conversation as well, and actually it was kind of nice to be able to break away from the sort of perfunctory agenda of, of reviewing and applying and, and critiquing policies to get to the policy end of what does this look like moving forward. So I want to thank my committee members also for really being super present and engaging that day, as well as staff for taking the time to really hear what we had to say and think about how we move forward. So that's where we are.
Thank you. Teaching and learning.
Madam Chair, I don't have any updates. I just look forward to a meeting this coming Tuesday.
Okay, right, okay. And again, this will be the session when teaching and learning, some of the looking ahead, so invite folks to be a part of that also.
And Madam, I just mentioned that committees are also taking public comment, so if the community is, is feeling like they're not having space to contribute or share their ideas and their thoughts and questions, that I believe all three committee meeting, committees now take public comment, correct? And that, that is continuing.
That's right.
In our current situation. So if you have information for us, please, please reach out.
Thank you. Commissioner Banjima, I didn't know if you wanted to share anything from MAVE, and then I'm going to move to the end of our agenda.
Well, can you hear me? I have to keep asking because this phone is acting. Yes, we did have a MAVE meeting, and there's no new reports. We've all reported, each district reported what was going on at the schools with the students being online, so it was very interesting, and talked about graduation and all the activities they were putting together for students' graduation. In addition to that, I'd also like to mention we have a meeting tomorrow for strategic priorities, and the committee is moving along very well. Each committee member has been meeting and talking with board members, and we submitted at the work that we have done and asking for comments, and tomorrow we're going to be reviewing those comments, and we will report back sometime in June, the results of the comments that the board members have submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. May I add to that, MAVE?
Excuse me?
May I add to the MAVE conversation, Madam Chair? Just to let the community know that MAVE has provided response letters to Dr. Salmon on their plans, as well as to Senator Pincky for his ideas around balanced calendar and year-round learning, and we've also provided letters of support regarding E-Rate and access to technology. So, so those have been, been public statements on behalf of our board and all the boards in Maryland from MAVE.
Thank you. Just for folks, for your information, upcoming committee meetings, teaching and learning, as was mentioned, will be meeting on, on Wednesday, June 3rd at 3:30. These are all virtual meetings continuing. The Operations Committee will meet again on Tuesday, June 16th at 10:30. Policy Committee on Tuesday, June 16th at 3:30. The next public board meeting will be on Tuesday, June the 9th at 5:00 p.m. And just a reminder to everyone that tomorrow is, is an important session at City Council where we will be presenting the budget for the school system for next year also, sharing that. Is there any other item that needs to come? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Richardson.
Second, James.
Is there anyone who is opposed? If not, I will, I will take that as a unanimous vote that you are all in favor of adjourned. And so this meeting is adjourned. Please, everyone, thank you for your participation. Thank you for being with us this evening. Please stay safe, and we will see you either at a City Council or at another board meeting or at one of our committee meetings. Thank you, and good, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.